Not sure what went wrong there. We might have missed a few minutes there. Okay. Resolution number 21-332, in the matter of approving the schedule of assessments for the cost of the proceedings for the dismissed Radnor Number 2015 Number One Drainage Improvement Petition Project.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, a discussion, vote?
Vote on motion 21-332. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution number 21-331, or 333, in the matter of approving a contract of sale and purchase between Patty, Lynn, Chapman, and others and the Board of Delaware County Commissioners for the Berlin Business Park Pump Station.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, a discussion.
Bob Lamb, Economic Development Director. Before you use a request to approve a contract for acquisition of 4.5 acres permanently for a pump station that will be used to service the Berlin Business Park, there is also an additional half acre that would be in place for 24 months with the construction easement associated with this contract. The structure of the deal is $50,000 we provided in tap credits to the owners for development on their remaining parcels. We will also be building the mound that is required under the zoning approval for the Berlin Business Park, and then a good faith effort to have the road constructed entering into the Berlin Business Park by September of 2023.
Questions or comments? Vote?
Vote on motion 21-333. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Resolution number 21-334, in the matter of approving a cooperative agreement between the Delaware County Board of Commissioners, the Delaware County Department of Economic Development, and the Delaware County Convention and Business Bureau to promote Delaware County.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, a discussion.
Bob Lamb, Economic Development Director. Commissioners, before you use a request to approve a contract with the C V B in order to provide assistance with marketing endeavors, feasibility studies, and research, all of this is focused on supporting our business community. The structure of the agreement is 74,000 to be allocated to the C V B in two payments. The second payment of $26,000 is contingent upon the county administrator authorizing the payment.
Any questions or comments?
If you could just kind of go over some of the items that will be covered by this, I think it's important that we are aware of the marketing initiatives, because it's not just Polaris, it's not just the fair, it's a number of different things.
Yes, those are included in there, but we have been working hand in hand with the C V B over the past year, especially related COVID issues, and trying to support the business community by letting people know that they're out there, that they're open, and trying to encourage people to come to the county, to visit our businesses, to visit different locations, and these funds will help support these activities. One of the key projects currently being undertaken right now is what we call the Powell Road Corridor Project, and we see other similar type programs going forward. That project is oriented towards highlighting businesses all the way from Polaris to the zoo that are along Powell Road and letting people know that they're open. We're doing clips of each business that wants to participate in there and that we have engaged, highlighting them on social media, and just doing what we can to provide some marketing assistance during this time.
Notice there's a program for the fairgrounds and jug. You could just talk about that a little bit, because that's, obviously, the fair last year was a big disappointment that we weren't able to have it. We still had the jug, but no attendance, so that was very unique. So what we're trying to accomplish with this.
Yeah, so the C V B is working hand in hand with the fairgrounds in order to promote the fairgrounds better. Part of that is a website improvement process so that they have a better presence out there and can highlight what it is they're doing and when they're doing it to the community in a more succinct-type manner. And so that's going to be one area in which the C V B is trying to be of assistance to the greater community.
Yeah, and we have a new ag center building that is, should open next month, and that's going to be available to be used for all kinds of purposes. It's not the biggest venue in terms of number of people indoors in the county, and it's going to be a beautiful new facility, so it's available for all kinds of purposes.
Yeah, and we want to highlight those great things that are going on, not just at the fairgrounds, but throughout our community, including the zoo.
Right, so, okay.
Can I ask you any comments?
No.
I'd just like to reinforce, and we've talked about it before, shopping locally, supporting the local businesses, we can't say that enough, and they deserve our support. And as I talked before, the large players have not been hurt by the pandemic, and this is a time we need to step up and support them, and this is an opportunity to have remind everybody about shopping locally, and that's a good thing.
We're really excited about the program, and we've seen some great feedback from both businesses and residents.
Any other questions or comments? Vote?
Vote on motion 21-334. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution number 21-335, in the matter of approving a project agreement between the Delaware County Board of Commissioners and the Delaware County Transportation Improvement District for North Road Extension Phase One.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, a discussion.
Good morning, Commissioners. Rob Riley, Chief Deputy Engineer. This agreement involves the North Road Extension Project, as you're aware, will connect between Shanahan Road and Peachbloom Road. Phase One involves the section at the north end and will serve the new Olentenge Elementary School, which will open this summer. Currently, we are scheduled to start construction in the next, really the next few weeks, and then have the road completed by August. So this, again, is a joint project between the T I D and Delaware County, and the agreement spells out the provisions of that agreement.
Questions or comments?
What about the rest of the extension, then, Rob? What's going on there?
So we have a couple items down. That item, I'll talk more about that, but just as a preview, we are in discussions with Evans Farm Land Development Company right now. They do have a residential project off Shanahan Road that will involve North Road, and so not quite there yet with project agreement with them, but we expect that at some point soon.
Other questions or comments? Vote?
Vote on motion 21-335. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Resolution number 21-336, in the matter of approving right-of-way work permit summary sheet.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, a discussion.
These are all typical routine utility installation permits, and we're recommending approval.
Questions or comments?
Vote on motion 21-336. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number 21-337, in the matter of approving modification Number One to the Professional Services Agreement with Johnson, Mirum, and Thompson Incorporated.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, a discussion.
We're requesting modification of the current contract with J M T. J M T, we selected about two years ago for General Engineering Services Agreement. J M T actually designed Phase One of the North Road Extension. We have a scope and fee from them to design Phase Two, which would extend it south to Shanahan Road, but we will need additional money in the agreement to cover that cost. So again, I think this is a good use of the G E S contracts. We typically bring two G E S contracts to you each year. This type of agreement allows us to react pretty quickly to developments, and so we've become a big fan of the G E S contracts, just because you don't have to necessarily go through the same notification period as you do for a typical design contract.
Questions or comments? Vote?
Vote on motion 21-337. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number 21-338, in the matter of approving the software and service agreement between the Delaware County Board of Commissioners for and on behalf of Delaware County Emergency Medical Services and Pulse Point Foundation for the use of Pulse Point Respond System.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, a discussion.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jeff Fischel, Director of EMS. Behind me is Chief Ponzi from Genoa Township. Assistant Chief Jen Cochrane, Delaware County EMS, Director of Delcom, Patrick Brandt, Chief Tom O'Brien, Liberty Township, and Chief Donahue from Delaware City.
And I need to interrupt you for just a second. I said we had two prominent fire chiefs here today. We had three, actually, and my apologies for excluding one, and that's on me, and my apologies, I didn't see at the time. And we're very pleased to have all of you here today. Thank you.
We're going to talk a little bit about and update you on the prehospital care board, but the first item is to, we are all bringing to your attention, or to your request, to approve this contract for the Pulse Point Software Program. What this is, is it's a application or an app that people can download onto their phones, and when somebody is out in public and they have, if they are unfortunate enough to have cardiac arrest in public, if somebody near them has downloaded the Pulse Point app, it will send an alert to that person's phone. That person will then go directly to the individual that's in cardiac arrest and initiate CPR. The app will also tell them if there's an AED close by, and they can either grab the AED or send somebody to grab an AED, and CPR and the use of an AED can be applied quickly to somebody who's gone into cardiac arrest in public. The reason why this is so important is because what we know from the science is the quicker somebody gets by standard CPR, the better their ability to survive an out-of-hospital cardiac arrest. So this is something that was brought to the prehospital care board. We all voted unanimously to approve it and bring it to you for approval, and we're going to speak a little bit more on, like I said, the updates of the prehospital care board, but this is probably the first big, major thing that we've completed and brought forth for approval to the Commissioners. Does anybody else that wants to speak on that before?
Questions or comments?
I didn't see a cost figure in the resolution. I don't know, maybe I missed it, but how much does this cost?
The first year is the implementation year, which is a little over 20,000, and then it's a little over 10,000 every year after.
Okay, that was my next question a little bit. It's got auto renewal?
Yes.
But you can get out of it if you decided you've got a better app or you don't like it or whatever.
Correct.
Other questions or comments? Vote?
Vote on motion 21-338. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Resolution number 21-339, in the matter of approving a sales quote with Tyler Technologies Incorporated for the installation and maintenance of a CAD export interface and Pulse Point interface.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, a discussion.
Good morning, Commissioners. Patrick Brandt and I, one director. What we have for you is a change order to our Tyler CAD system. It's going to bring us two interfaces. One is the Pulse Point Interface, which Director Fischel just spoke about, and the other one is to integrate our recording system into, when with our new CAD system. Those are the two changes we're asking for be approved by you guys.
Questions or comments?
Just pleased that you're bringing this before us. Thank you.
Not a problem, and I'm just going to add one other thing on the Director Fischel's thing on the Pulse Point. We actually looked at that back in 2017, and Powell Village Academy doesn't exist anymore, but there's a senior down there who did his project, his end-of-the-year project on Pulse Point and what it had, and we talked about it, he brought it to my office, but at the time, it didn't have the benefits and stuff that we saw. But I'm going to reach out, it was a Jonathan Uptograph. He was a senior at the time in 2017 and came in, and him and his dad came in and did a speech, and he brought a report and everything, which I've shared with our 911 board back in the day, but at the time, it just didn't meet the needs, and Pulse Point has came a long way and updated their features and their abilities, what they can do. And our other agencies around us in Franklin County have actually signed on as well, so there has been positive movement in the company and what they've done, and it should be known, at least the senior at the time, Mr. Uptograph, reached out to us and saw the benefits. So we do have the public buy-in of this application as too, which is very good, because that always helps you to benefit what you're doing.
Boy, that's great.
Other questions or comments? Vote?
Vote on motion 21-339. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have our prehospital care board updates and presentation with the strategic plan next.
Thank you, and good morning. John Donahue, City of Delaware Fire Chief, and representing the Delaware County Prehospital Care System. And this is my first opportunity to actually be in your new renovated building, and quite a job that has been done here. It's absolutely beautiful. But on behalf of the Prehospital Care Board, we'd like to thank the Commissioners and also thank Commissioner Frommer for the opportunity this morning. I'd like to give a little bit of a update and a little bit of history, as you may recall, in the formation of this system. But on February 7, 2019, the Delaware County Commissioners approved the formation of the Delaware County Prehospital Care System, and that was done through resolution. But in 2019, we began meeting, began, get a little bit of traction on moving forward, only to in 2020, obviously, deal with COVID. And looking at the oversight of where we were heading, it shifted in 2020 to more of an operational matter, so we weren't able to really meet on a consistent basis. But with that being said, earlier this year, we regrouped, refocused our look and our vision, and began a strategic planning process. And you may have a, or you should have a copy of our strategic plan before you. This plan was adopted earlier this month in April by the Prehospital Care System Board, and today is our first step in reaching out to all the governmental agencies, first of all, will be the County Commissioners, but then to our Township Trustees, as well as our city administration, to enlighten them about our process, how we're working together, share our vision and mission, and so forth. But throughout this strategic planning process, it was not only the chiefs that you see here, I'd also like to add that Chief Cooper with Concord Township was here, Chief Noble, prior to his retirement in Orange Township, and most recently, Chief McNeil with Orange Township has joined us. Chief Cato with Harlan Township has been part of this development. But also, we also asked for the fire departments that are not doing EMS transport, we asked for Representative and Chief Kovach from the B S T N G Fire Department, joined us. So when you look at the strategic planning process, it really did involve representatives from all forms of the EMS systems here in Delaware County. But with that, the strategic planning process allowed us to focus on, really, where we were headed as an organization. And through this, we created a mission and vision statement, we created and looked at our, what we call SWAT analysis. So we actually created and looked at our strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and also threats, and then we finally established organizational goals. This plan was adopted by the system earlier, as I said, this month, and is scheduled to take us through the end of 2023. So it is essentially what we call our game plan, moving forward. Before I ask our committee chairs to come up and review the goals, I would like to present to you what our mission and visions are. So what a mission is, is essentially it tells us why we exist as far as a organization or in this aspect as a prehospital care system. And that is to ensure that high-quality prompt and coordinated emergency medical services are provided to the residents of Delaware County. Our vision is, in addition to knowing who we are and understanding our beliefs, it's also there to provide us where we want to be in the future. So with that, the Delaware County Prehospital Care System will develop a high-performance emergency medical system throughout Delaware County involving all EMS providers utilizing technology, training, purchasing, central supply, and also focusing on the economy of scale. So with that being said, what I would like to now do is introduce those who will be providing an overview of the goals that we've established and will be working on. First will be Assistant Chief Jen Cochrane with Delaware County EMS, who will provide an overview of her 2021 goals, as well as talk just briefly about Cortico. Then it'll be, that'll be followed by our EMS Standards Committee, which will be your EMS Director, Director Fischel, followed by our Regional Collaboration Goals, which will be Chief Tom O'Brien from Liberty Township, and wrap up with Patrick Brandt reviewing the technology and innovation goals. So I thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jennifer Cochrane, Delaware County EMS Assistant Chief of Admin. The Prehospital Care Board has established goals and objectives to achieve our mission and goal, or mission and vision, sorry, that Chief Donahue just talked about. These goals and objectives are going to help us enhance their strengths, our weaknesses, and provide clear direction that we need to as a team. By following these goals with the Prehospital Care Board will be directed into the desired future so that we can reduce obstacles and prioritize and review things on a regular basis. Some of our goals will be to recognition of the Prehospital Care Board System's strategic plan by all agencies, develop a central supply system to use by all fire and EMS agencies, which will be cost savings. That will be the Regional Collaboration Committee. Identify a process and priorities to utilize available funding to advance EMS throughout Delaware County. That'll be Chief Donahue. Promote work and accomplishment of the Prehospital Care Board System. That'll be led by me, so promoting the system. Develop and implement a single countywide medical protocol with all fire and EMS agencies. They're working very hard on this. They meet several times, sometimes more than once a month, and they review, and they're going over the application right now that we're going to be using for the protocol. Explore means to implement a unified, oh, already said that, conduct clinical research to assist in advancing the existing high-performance emergency medical system. That's the EMS Standards Committee. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's me again. Director of EMS, Jeff Fischel. I'm the Chair of the EMS Standards Committee for the Prehospital Care Board. We have three committees, EMS Standards, the Regional Collaboration, and the Technology and Innovation. I'm quickly going to share with you the 2021 to 2023 goals that we have for the Standards Committee. As Chief Cochrane stated, the implementation of a single county-wide protocol is one of our goals. It's the one that's nearest to completion, and notably, all other goals pretty much hinge on that one being completed. Once we've implemented a countywide protocol, off of that, we will be able to define a level of service expectation in Delaware County through establishing performance metrics. Some of those metrics could be response time, personnel training, and certification standards, et cetera. What we've noticed from the development of the countywide medical protocol is the need to also formalize or attempt to formalize a consortium of medical directors or medical director board, because going into the future, when we talk about a central supply, there's a lot of red tape at the state level and the pharmacy board level with the purchase and sharing of medications and equipment. We feel if we can establish a medical direction board and have multiple medical directors on there, we would be able to appease the red tape and get to where we want to be with the sharing of supplies and the cost savings. And lastly, a consistent gathering and evaluation of C Q I data obtained by each local service provider with complete interoperability and report to the medical director consortium. So with the implementation of the new protocol, actually doing C Q I based off of the protocol to ensure that everybody is adhering to the highest standards and implementing and using the protocol the way that it was intended, and this data would be reviewed by the medical director group. Any questions about the EMS Standards Committee?
Thank you.
Next is Regional Collaboration.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you guys this morning about the Prehospital Care System. If you were to do a two-circle Gantt chart, mine is the middle of the Gantt chart. I'm the Regional Collaboration, so I have to herd all the kittens into one basket to make sure that everything functions and follows. On top of that, some of the things we're going to do with this is we're going to look at everything that's for the betterment of the county, and if there's any collaboration between any of the agencies, a lot of us go to the same agency for the same thing, and we're going to try to stop the duplication of effort, to streamline how to get our residents to the proper care that they need. We're also going to work with external and internal people to make sure that we are providing the best service. We all know we provide an excellent service in our communities and in the county, but we want to take it to that next level, and we're going to use this board as a platform for that. We are going to work on central purchasing. We've seen a lot of opportunity to save costs for all the communities if we have a central purchasing region. That's going to be a little bit easier said than done, but that's one of our main goals. We've also brought up Pulse Point, which I'd like to thank you for approving. Once we roll out Pulse Point, I think the, we get it out to the community, we get community CPR, I think if it saves one life, it's worth it. We have so many recreational areas, so many trails and stuff, and so many cardiac arrests on golf courses and stuff. If we can get this out and people can use this, and we get some help to someone quicker before we get there, it's going to be, it's going to make a matter of, it's going to be life and death for them, a difference. And then we're also going to look at regional training, along with, as Director Fischel pointed out, with the protocol that we're getting ready to roll out, that's going to be a counterweight protocol, which in itself is a huge endeavor. We're going to look at ways to do training on the protocol, that everybody gets the same training, so it's consistent across the board, and it might be through, you know, audiovisual or with, unfortunately, the COVID event, we'll be using Zoom or whatever, one of those mediums. So we'll be working on training and everything else that goes along with it. So thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, are there any questions? Perfect, thank you.
Morning again, Commissioners. Patrick Brandt and I, one director. I am in charge of the technology. We take the ideas that they have and get the job done. We implement it and get it completed. So with that, obviously, one of our, a couple of our big ones that we've had on technology, you guys already approved the Cortico, the Cortico thing for PTSD and that, for the safety of the employees and everything. That was one that was reviewed by our group, as well as the Pulse Point. We're in the middle of reviewing an application to work on our special needs, which involves our EMA department and everything. We're also looking at, obviously, the big one that you guys are well aware of and wanted to know about was our A V L and CAD, the Automatic Vehicle Location, and closest medic dispatching. That is in process with our new CAD system. Our new CAD system does go live 31st of August, so we're not far away. We're just under four months or just over four months from going live on that. Our staff at the 911 Center has been working very diligently on that, and also getting the chiefs involved on nature codes and making sure how we're setting this up, and making sure everything's implemented correctly. We're also working on station notification parts, which is our automated voice dispatching. That was actually, went live just over two weeks ago. So now, instead of you hearing the different voices over the radio of dispatching the calls, we're actually doing it automated, which is speeding up the way the dispatches are getting out, our time delay of having to wait for somebody on a call or whatever, or another person do it. When we get multiple calls at a time, we can stack them up and send them out, and it's, helps out the fire and EMS people on the other side, is you're not getting 27 different pitches of audio coming across from my voice or somebody else. It's all computerized and standard and doesn't make them bounce out of bed in the middle of the night and jump their heart all the way up. So that's another good part of it. So that is up and alive. You guys did that contract just over a year ago, so we're very proud of that. We are also working on, we have Captain Madison at the city, who's looking at Recitation Quality Improvement, R Q I, which is going to deal with their training and doing consistent training amongst the departments where they can get their A B C cards done of their ALS, their BLS, and their PALS, which is Pediatrics, Advanced Life Support, and Basic Life Support. So we have a bunch of projects in the technology works that you guys have seen and that more to come, so we greatly appreciate it. Any questions for my group?
Thank you very much.
Perfect, I like that.
So again, thank you. On behalf of the Prehospital Care System, we thank you for this opportunity today, and we look forward to coming back here and further discussing our successes in the future. So do you have any further questions whatsoever?
I just want to comment that the Prehospital Care Board over the last six months has done an outstanding job and really took a new direction when Chief Donahue took the reins on the strategic plan. And this first round of projects really, I think, encapsulates what this committee is about. The Cortico App is going to help all the first responders in the county, you know, help them. There's also two initiatives with COTS, which Chief Ponzi brought forward, as well as a Pulse Point to help improve patient care, provide resources that maybe one agency wouldn't do on their own, but as a group, it's, it's something that can be done. And then, you know, lastly, the central supply thing next year is going to be really exciting because that's going to be able to, purchasing power and things like that. So when you really look at the, the desires of setting up that committee, those really hit that, that core really hard, and, and I, I think naturally, they're just getting there as they work together, which is fantastic.
And I'd just like to chime in. I think the cohesiveness amongst all of our fire EMS partners focusing on EMS has never been a tighter group of individuals. I think that speaks, bodes well about the characters that, characters in a very good sense, but the characteristics of the chiefs and directors that we have here, so thank you very much.
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to make some comments. I'm going to go first. I, this is about, board's about two years old now, and we've come a, to quote, to quote a phrase used by somebody this morning, I won't say who, we've come a long way, baby. And if you see me with a red face, you know what I'm talking about. And we have come a long ways. And I think it's, I was sitting here making some notes, and I heard communication, I heard cooperation, and I heard central purchasing, and I, then the fourth one had to do with training, but it didn't start with a C, so I kind of messed up everything. So I wrote down constructive training or concentrated training, so I have four Cs. But I think those are four elements that really is what's going to make this successful in the past, current, and going forward. We have a great service throughout the county, but working together is going to save a life somewhere down the road that we don't know when and where, and, but it will. And the closest unit responding is a big deal when somebody's had a heart attack or whatever. And so I can't say it loudly enough or often enough, great job by everybody involved, and the people in our county are very, very fortunate to have such quality people working in their behalf to protect them at whatever the time. And I thought of Commissioner Benton, when you said golf courses, Mr. Chief O'Brien, made me think of him. He's always bringing up golf courses, so he probably got a little scared when he said heart attacks on a golf course over there. So, but I can't say it loud enough. Thank you, thank you very much. And with that, open up further comments.
Well, I, this is, it's just great. I mean, many lives will be saved. I'm, I'm convinced already they have, and as, as you said, chief, there's never been this level of collaboration, cooperation, and, and the excellent services we have working together. And I, I love your, all your Cs of, of, I mean, it, it is just so true. And I can't thank, I can't thank you enough, and thank you for your leadership, chief. Thank you, Mike, for, for also working with the board. You've done a lot, and everyone deserves a, a real pat on the back for this. It's, it's great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Again, a lot of good things have been said, so I won't repeat all those things. But that, it's good to see the board working so well together and accomplishing a lot of these very positive goals. The one thing that I was surprised and disappointed to learn many years ago was that we didn't always send the closest ambulance. And that was a surprise, a shock, you know, to say the least. So we've worked through that, we're now doing that, and that, that alone is going to save lives, and that's just a huge step forward. So I just wanted to thank you for doing that, among all the other things.
And the nice thing about that as well is when those agencies go, arrive on scene, it won't matter what color the vehicles are, we'll also be working off of a single protocol, which has not been the case. So when you look at the cogs and the wheels and so forth, and how everything will match, it'll certainly make a difference here countywide. So thank you.
Yeah, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
With that, we have a presentation, I believe Main Street has a presentation they want to make, so, Suzy, I'll let you come forward and take it from there.
Good morning. Is it okay? Jorge San Clemente is a member of our board, and he would like to record our presentation, if that's okay?
Sure.
Great. Well, thank you for having us. I'm Suzy Bibler, the executive director at Main Street Delaware, and with me I have our program coordinator, Caroline Pousatieri. And first, before we get to the presentation, I just wanted to thank the county for all of your efforts over the last year that you have provided, not only to Main Street, our nonprofit organization, but all the other nonprofits in the community that do such great work, and also for your support of the downtown small businesses with the revolving loan fund. So thank you for that. And now, with the presentation, this year, we would like to award the commissioners the, an award for the best building improvement for the beautiful building that we're standing in, the Delaware County Historic Courthouse. Not only did this project protect and honor the historical standards, it's a beautiful repurposing of the original courthouse and serves to remind the community of the history of Delaware. We believe that this project will also set the standards for future preservation and revitalization projects throughout the entire state of Ohio. So thank you for your hard work. I, we are fortunate enough to get a tour just a couple of weeks ago, and, I mean, just, you know, just saving the, the murals and not only saving them, but also providing a way for people to see them and get a closer look, just is, and that's just one of the aspects that, that we honor, honor you today for. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have, we'd like to present an award, a plaque to you, if we could?
Thank you very much, and we'll get a photo of everybody in just a second, but before we do that, I just want to, this is a project that's made possible by the taxpayers in the county who supported with their investment of their tax dollars, the three commissioners who, past and present, who worked to make this happen, and I think we're all very proud of it, and it's something that I think we all take very deep pride in. And thank you very much for the acknowledgement of that. Any other comments from the other commissioners?
No, I, I just, thank you so much. I mean, this really means a lot. My gosh, and thank you so much. The recognition is, is huge, and the building is beautiful, and, and in talking with other commissioners throughout the state too, so often what's happened, their courthouses are old, and therefore, they don't have either the financial backing or the desire to, to really improve and, and, and take their courthouse and, and preserve it, and, which is what we've done here. So I'm, I'm just so happy for your recognition of it.
Absolutely.
Yeah, it is true. So many courthouses around the state have been torn down, sadly, because of the cost of renovating. But fortunately, we didn't have to do that. That would have just been awful to lose this, this beautiful building. The other thing I think that's really neat is we've added the Veterans Plaza out front.
Absolutely.
You know, it just wasn't really there in that capacity, in that size and dedication. So it's great that we were able to do that, and it's very nice, very much appreciated you guys recognize that, and it's really, you know, we're really proud that we were able to accomplish this. It will be a building for decades to come, you know, that will be used and, and part of the downtown. And we've got another building right behind here that's going to be repurposed and, and part of the downtown community as well, so we're real excited about that, too.
Well, thank you for your efforts. They definitely stand out in the community.
With that, Mr. Stage, Representative Finance Authority, has something he'd like to present as well or a comment on, if you want to come forward. We'll do that, then we'll get the photo, and come forward, David.
Good morning, Commissioner Merrill, Commissioner Lewis, Commissioner Benton. You're getting a double award here this morning, I guess, because Friday, the young ladies presented an award to the Delaware County Finance Authority for our support of development in downtown Delaware, well, city of Delaware, period, but downtown Delaware in specific. And also, as part of that, they wanted to recognize that the effect, positive effects that the revolving loan fund has had on businesses being able to stay in operation, not only in Delaware, but in Powell, Liberty Township, Orange Township, really countywide. And so they presented a plaque that essentially looks like yours to us.
Beautiful.
And I, we want to accept this on behalf of the commissioners, because if you weren't supporting the finance authority, we wouldn't be able to do this. So thank you very much.
Very modest. The finance authority's done a great job, and, but that's very, very nice of you to say that.
I would encourage you to take a look at the picture on ours and yours, if you get a chance, because that just knocks your eyes out. I thought it was a rendering at first.
Wow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything anybody wants to add? Okay, let's, I don't know how we're going to do this. Let's get a photo of just us with this, and then perhaps get a photo of both plaques and everybody together. Is that reasonable?
I guess it's actually, yeah. Okay. There we go. We're, we're going to keep you. Yeah. Keep it just a little, actually, turn yourself a little bit, we're going to like, okay.
Yes, thank you. Let's get one with the both flags. Come on, guys, let me pass, let's put the both of them here. Can you have a record with that flag?
All right, there we go. Took the, that one a little bit towards Georgia. Very good, thank you.
You guys, yes, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you so much. All right, one more time. Sorry.
Mr. Morris, you have to get a photo of the presentation of the fire chiefs and Jeff. Okay, everybody's involved in the presentation, come forward.
Yeah. Yeah. This is the same. Yeah.
Come on, fire. They got this done, but I got off the.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You're a father. Everybody's got to go back. Come on, everybody's got to go back. Get official, yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
I think we got a, like, half a minute.
All right. Yeah. We have a good, yeah. Yes, but we can talk about it. Yeah, I can do it.
Okay, with that?
We do have one other item on our agenda, item number 12. The board cannot consider a vote on that yet until we have an auditor certificate in place, which is working, but it probably will not happen until we reconvene later today at 1:30.
Our apologies, but we're, we have to have the auditor's blessing, and so money is there. So we'll, but we do, we'll be going to recess, we have a viewing at 1:30. We will do it in front of the viewing at 1:30, presumably, assuming we get the certificate.
Can, can we provide some comments right now about it? Trustee Icorn is here as well, so I think.
That's, that's fine.
Right, and we could get a picture now, too. Nobody's going to know that we approved it at 1:30 versus right now.
So who, Mike, you want to?
Yeah, no, please, the, very, very, very pleased, I mean, today's been obviously a theme of collaboration and, and a lot of the great work that the prehospital care board has done. As part, you know, shortly after the prehospital care board was started, there were discussions with Delaware County EMS and Liberty Fire, as well as Delaware County EMS and City of Delaware on the current contracts that we have for EMS reimbursement. And both of those contracts had, had expired, you know, about 10 years ago, long before any of the commissioners sitting here were commissioners. And very pleased with the agreements there. They set up the collaboration of training, resource sharing, a lot of the stuff we've talked about today. And I think, you know, particularly Liberty today, Liberty has a lot of growth on the horizon, and I think having this agreement in place that collaboratively sets out the EMS services and how Liberty and Delaware County will, will operate will allow them to, everybody to focus on the care as the community grows and not trying to worry about contracts and getting things, you know, put together. And like I said, it's been a really, a very, you know, anytime you go into contract discussions, it's usually you try to find what both parties are looking for and how they all come together, and I think that that was very easy in this with, with Liberty Township, particularly with trustee Icorn leading the effort and Chief O'Brien. So I don't know if trustee Icorn wants to come up and say a few words or to the podium? She can, she can backcheck me on all that stuff.
Good morning, commissioners. I just want to take a moment to say thank you on behalf of the Liberty Township residents and the city of Powell residents. It means a lot to us that we worked so well with your administrator, your former, who did a phenomenal job, the collaborative efforts that were put in. Also, as Administrator Farmer said, a special thank you to Chief O'Brien, and we are just very excited about this agreement and appreciate all that you are doing for us, so thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak?
Chief, would you like to say anything?
I would just like to, commissioners, I would love to echo what my trustee has said and what Director Farmer said. This was a very good negotiation. The process went, worked the way the process is supposed to work. There were no outrageous demands. It was, hey, what can we do? We haven't had a contract for over 10 years. Let's get this settled, let's, let's, let's move, let's move forward and provide good service, better service than we have. So we'll thank all of you for that, and Director Farmer, thank you, and trustee Icorn as well, thank you. We're very, very pleased, very happy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, our apologies that we can't vote on it this time, but hopefully, we'll have the authorization to vote this afternoon. Any other comments?
Yes, just, just like to say, it, it's definitely time after 10 years, and very happy to, to be approving this agreement shortly, and thank you very much for your collaboration, again, cooperation, and also Mike's work on this agreement. So, thank you.
Commissioner Benton?
Yeah, it is good to see things like this that just tend to drift, not get addressed, get addressed and, and a fair agreement put in place, and, and the whole county is better for it. So I want to thank you all for, Mike, for leading on this, to get it behind us and move forward and focus on better things. And that's what the prehospital care board has demonstrated this morning. We've got a lot of good things going on. Thank you all.
I think we've had a very unique morning with all the different elements of cooperation that we've talked about today, and I think it, I think the role the commissioners and the county can play is extremely important. I think that coupled with the individuals throughout the county, I think we've had a, what I would call a win-win for the benefit of our taxpayers in this county today. And going forward, I think we have a great future, and we're only held back by our own lack of vision sometimes, and I think, I'm very excited about the future. So with that, I believe we're open for administrative reports from our.
Yeah, I, I just have one thing to add, you know, and, Gary, Commissioner Merrill kind of stole my thunder, but no, the, you're right, there, there was also something on the agenda today twice that was a really great project, that North Road that Rob Riley was talking about. I mean, that, that project was a collaborative effort between the county and two developers. It's not easy to get two developers that have competing projects right beside each other.
I think we've had a very unique morning with all the different elements of cooperation that we've talked about today. And I think it, I think the role the Commissioners and the county can play is extremely important. I think that coupled with the individuals throughout the county, I think we've had what I would call a win-win for the benefit of our taxpayers in this county today. And going forward, I think we have a great future. And we're only held back by our own lack of vision sometimes. And I think, I'm very excited about the future. So with that, I believe we're open for administrative report from our Administrator?
I just have one thing to add, you know, and, Commissioner Merrill, you kind of stole my thunder, but no, the, you're right. There was also something on the agenda today, twice, that was a really great project, that North Road, that Rob Riley was talking about. I mean, that, that project was a collaborative effort between the county and two developers. It's not easy to get two developers that have competing projects right beside each other. And we were able to get the, we phased the project, and we were able to get it in for Olentangie Schools. If you remember, the elementary school is in desperate need. So once again, I just wanted to bring forward that project that was on. And you can see that having to phase it, but we were able to get the county, you know, that regional road with the county, and also the two developers, which was a really good project to highlight. So that's it.
Commissioner Benton?
Just a couple of other things. Legislative update. We had that discussion on Friday. The budget was the main topic of discussion with our legislators. Rick Carfania, Representative Rick Carfania was on the call. And it is full funding of the Indigent Defense, which is the main, was the main priority of CCA, or the Counties Association. And some other things in there, you know, there's a lot of negotiations before it's all finalized, but it is moving forward, and it seems to treat the counties well. Probably the other concern was Olentangie School funding. This version does have significant increase for Olentangie and Big Walnut School Systems, which are the fast-growing school systems, which, under the current formula, those tend to get short-changed. So they are proposing to change it. We'll see how that goes. But if they do change it as proposed, it would be good news for Olentangie and Big Walnut in terms of better funding of their operation, their school districts, which is sorely, sorely needed. And we really get short-changed big time at the State House under the current structure. SEPCO, I've got a SEPCO Board Retreat Thursday and Friday, and we have our Land Bank Annual Meeting on Wednesday. That's it.
Commissioner Lewis?
There is a Stepping Up virtual meeting tomorrow from 11:00 to 2:00. Justice Stratton will be leading that meeting and have many people in the county participating. So another step forward for Stepping Up. That's it.
The, I just want to make a comment regarding, Commissioner Benton's comments regarding the education part of the state bill. I had an opportunity to talk to Senator Brenner on Saturday. He has some concerns that the bill is not ideal at this point. And, but he confident that those issues will get worked out to the benefit of our schools here in the county. And I don't, I'm not going to hazard a guess where it lies, but I trust our House and our Senate Representatives will make sure that we are properly represented, and we get a result that benefits the schools in our county. So I know that's the goal of both.
Yeah, and last year, as many people, or last two years ago, as many people will remember, unfortunately, Governor Dewine vetoed the significant increase in funding for Olentangie and Big Walnut, that the Senate and the House had negotiated and put together and advanced in the budget. And Governor Dewine, line item, vetoed it out of there. So that really hurt our residents and taxpayers in the school districts. So that's the third part of this process, is we've got to make sure that Governor Dewine does not veto whatever arrangements, final funding is put into this budget bill.
Okay. If there's nothing else, I have nothing else to announce. We, no executive?
Correct.
So we are in recess until 1:30 today. Thank you very much.